Good evening. My name is Helen Picard. I'm the Chair of the North Andover School Committee. Today is March 4th, 2021. It is 7:02 PM and I'm calling this meeting to order. I'd ask you to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we start, I want to remind everybody to silence their devices. And this meeting is being recorded. And I'm going to read that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law and the Governor's March 15, 2020, Order Imposing a Strict Limit on the Number of People That May Gather in One Place, This Meeting of the North Andover School Committee may be conducted via remote participation by some or all committee members and staff. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found in the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to hear the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 99, Verizon Channel 28, or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the school department website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible. There's also YouTube meeting link, HTTPS:U-T-U.B-E. And then some other stuff, you can find it on North Andover Cam. I don't think it's really helpful for me to keep reading that. So, we are called back to order from executive session and our first order of business is public comment. We have three public comments that were submitted through the form, one of which was requesting a phone call. So, as has been our practice, I will call that person into the meeting at this time. And this is Courtney Pham, who's going to join us. Hello?
Can I help you?
I'm looking for Courtney Pham.
Not she.
Ah, misdialed, sorry.
Thank you.
Bye.
Helen did say that was her worst nightmare.
Well, at least they were nice.
Do you have her number? You want me to send it?
The number that you sent me is different from the one that she submitted on the form. So, no, I can see that I pressed the wrong numbers.
Oh, okay, alright, okay.
Yeah, I can see that I did that. Let's try again. She's probably watching and wondering. She's like, my phone's not ringing.
I feel like it's dialing for dollars. Anyway, the number is that.
Yeah.
Hello, is this Courtney? Courtney? Are you with us, Courtney?
Hello?
Hello, Courtney Pham?
Yes, this is Courtney.
Yay!
Hi!
I had a failure, so please start with your address and go right into your public comment.
Okay, my address is 544 Foster Street. My name is Courtney Pham. Most of you know me as the Head Chair of the North Andover Special Education Parent Advisory Council. I am also currently on the Return to School Parent Focus Group. Hearing that our K through 5 will be going back to school in April is wonderful to hear. But the fact remains that all our children need to be back at school. I do, I do believe you all have been working hard trying to make this possible for our children. We are all frustrated, feeling helpless, trying not only to help our children, but ourselves to stay above water. I was blown away by the high school students' presentation last week. I truly hope everyone here, Mr. Jackson's team, truly take in what these high schoolers are trying to say to you. I know firsthand what services North Andover is providing for our children. Our CPAC has had Nikki Murphy and Deanna Lima to talk about this topic. The focus now for our older children should be how can we help them now while we come up with a safe way to get them back to school? Let's, let us do better. We need to. Our children are counting on us. They need us to. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
Have a nice night.
Thank you. You can hang up now.
Okay, bye.
Bye-bye. Alright. So, the next public comments, there's two more and I will take them in the order that they were received. This one is from Aiman Oka Rule at 27 Hawthorne Place. And it reads, "I am leaving a public comment today for two reasons. The first is to express concern at the use, or what I believe to be the misuse, of the Public Comment Forum. At the last meeting, three of the five candidates for school committee used the Public Comment Forum to call in and express their thoughts on the current state of school reopening. While this is fine for ordinary citizens, it is my belief that this was an unacceptable use of the Public Comment Forum that enabled the candidates to campaign to a captive audience. Public comment is meant to allow comments to the sitting school committee and allow candidates to use the public forum for campaigning as a misuse of that time that takes away from other public comments on more pressing issues. The second reason I'm writing is to encourage the committee to preserve the later high school start time in any schedule proposed, proposal for the 2021-2022 school year. These are obvious logistical challenges, but there is no amount of money, time, or resources that North Andover can invest in its schools that will have as great a positive impact on test scores, grades, and general well-being of students as a later start time. As I have told to this committee before, studies are clear on the subject. I would strongly advocate that you please maintain a start time of at least 8:00 AM for next year and preferably later if possible. Thank you." The next public comment is from Diane Sicheri, S-I-C-H-E-R-I, at 15 Royal Crest Drive. It states, "My question is concerning the possible return of middle school and high school students if they return full-time with buses..." Will, excuse me, if they return full-time, will the buses all start? "I'm a single working parent and we live about three miles from school on dangerous roads. I don't want them walking because it's too far and their backpacks are too heavy. And what if it is a bad weather day? Parents don't always work locally and can't drive them. So, if school is reinstated, please bring back the buses. Most of us should have a credit from when the buses were stopped." And that's it for public comment. Now, we are on to our consent agenda. So, we have the approval of minutes from February 25, 2021. And I would remind folks that the public comment we did not get to last time are attached to those minutes. So, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes as printed in the packet.
Still moved?
Seconded.
So, I believe that was moved by Mr. McDevitt and seconded by Ms. Mabley.
Correct.
And a voice call of, oh!
Discussion.
Let's do this.
We didn't do the roll call.
But we didn't do the roll call of who's in the meeting. So, let's approve the minutes and then we'll go back to who's in the meetings. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Alright, so Ms. Lynch?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Teresi?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Mabley?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So, that's 5-0 in favor of approving the minutes as printed in the packet. Okay, so let's go backwards and identify who's in the meeting. So, I'm going to do roll call with all members of the committee, although we've already done that. So, just say aye if you're present. Ms. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Teresi?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Mabley?
Aye.
And I'm here and I'm going to turn to Dr. Gilligan to introduce his cast of thousands.
Dr. Mealy, Assistant Superintendent?
Is here.
And Ms. Marks, Assistant Superintendent?
Present.
And we have Marcy Baccuzzi, the Executive Director of Special Education.
Here.
And Ms. Marks, do you want to introduce your team? Helen, would you like to introduce the people who are presenting in the Superintendent's Report now or do it when we get to the report?
Let's get everybody in.
Okay. Ms. Marks, you want to introduce the team?
Jarwell. So, with us tonight for the elementary data presentation are Cara Larkum, our STEM Director, Kristin Ando, our Humanities Director. We have our elementary principals, Principal Clark, Principal Cushing, Principal O'Laughlin, Principal Leahy, and Principal Raymond. And they have brought along teachers to help support and explain some of the data investigation and how they are using that in their schools. With us, we have Denise Coleman, Mike Hodnett, Katie Barnett, Kim Horton, Nikki Amison, Joni Coleman, Lauren Moran, and Nicole Radeski. And thank you all for being here.
Thank you for being here and I think we should have Cheryl Barzac, the Director of Nursing, Health, and Wellness. Cheryl?
Yes.
And Brian LaGrasse, our Public Health Director.
Hi, everybody.
Brian's here. And then, do we have Aiman?
I see Aiman.
Here.
Student rep representative, alright, good to see you, Aiman. And Mika?
Also here.
Alright, welcome.
And we have two other student reps here as well. Do not?
We do.
Okay, so we have Lindsay?
Here.
And Ethan?
Here.
Great. Is that everybody from your perspective, Dr. Gilligan?
I think so.
Okay. Is there anyone on the call or in the room that has not been named? Okay. And we didn't name anybody who's not here, so we're ready to go forward. Thank you for that. Sorry, we didn't get that at the very beginning. But we are on to the Superintendent's Report, oh, excuse me, the Student Report. And so, I'll turn it over to Aiman, Mika, Lizzie, and Ethan.
Yeah, so to start, we did want to introduce our new student reps, Lindsay and Ethan. And we're going to give them both a chance to introduce themselves to you all.
Hi, I'm Ethan. I am also a NEMAS Representative, which is our Regional Student Council. And I am also a member of our School Student Council. Yeah, so I'm definitely excited to be on these meetings.
Hi, nice to meet you. My name is Lindsay Trong. I am a junior and I am a co-president of Asian Pacific Islanders Club, the president of Black and Red Literary Magazine, and a historian at Student Council.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Welcome, and I apologize. I think I said Lizzie instead of Lindsay, so help me out if I need a little direction. So, go to it, folks.
Lindsay, take it away.
The Junior Class Calendar Fundraiser has raised more than $2,000 so far, as we mentioned last week.
And additionally, Student Council is participating in their virtual Polar Plunge fundraiser this year. It's normally something that would have happened at the state conference for student councils, which would have been today, but because it is virtual this year, the Polar Plunge is virtual as well and all the donations go towards Special Olympics of Massachusetts.
Student Council is holding a kindness challenge that runs for an entire month, meant to encourage students to take in random acts of kindness. An example we have was writing to Haikus for a person that you're close to, this was your best friend, about the person, about your relationship with them.
In addition, the Drama Guild is planning a musical for the seniors called Spelling Bee and also a play called Plaza Suite that is available to all members of the Drama Guild. And so, since the Drama Guild has been doing cabarets all year, everybody's definitely excited to do some real plays this spring. So, everybody's really happy for that.
That's awesome.
And as restrictions begin to loosen, the junior and senior classes are happy to report that we are planning prom events and other events for the future. And we will have more on that as we're able to share the details. In addition, the Concert Choir, the chorus of North Andover High School, has received news that it is safe for us to sing actual words out loud, provided that we are properly socially distanced and masked. And so, everybody is excited for that. We are also planning a concert for later in the spring, provided that things remain safe. And so, Chorus is very excited to be starting plans on getting a little more back to normal.
That's awesome.
The NAS Black Student Union finished out their activities for Black History Month, which was February, with an appearance on the Youth Center Podcast.
And then additionally, Fall 2, the season has begun last week on the 22nd of February. And this year, that includes cheer, football, both boys and girls swim and dive, and boys and girls indoor track.
And as teams begin to move into this weird season and the warming, the temperatures begin to warm up, teams are holding scrimmages over the next few weeks and then games will begin within the next few weeks. And as we look forward, again, two weeks from now, the trimester ends on March 19th. So, while there are no finals, students are ramping up the workload, going to a pseudo-final kind of season with, you know, more projects, more tests, more quizzes, that sort of thing. That's all we have for you tonight. Are there any questions?
We'll go through the committee and we'll start with Ms. Lynch.
Thank you. Welcome to the new members and that's an excellent report.
Thank you. And Mr. Teresi?
No questions, but great report, very well coordinated. I like that.
The flow is really good.
And Mr. McDevitt?
Again, great report. Quick question for Ethan. Obviously, we're really excited to see music come back and students be able to perform and complete those. You mentioned some events that might be planned for later in the spring. Do you anticipate those being outdoors? I'm gathering yes.
Yes, for now, everything, all of the events that are being planned for Chorus and Drama Guild are being planned for outside measures, just so everything can be as safe as possible. That's, as has been stated multiple times, is the number one priority here, to have fun while being safe.
And do you think you'll do those in like that kind of courtyard area of the high school or the amphitheater behind the middle?
Yeah, so people were looking at the football field for the Chorus stuff specifically.
Okay, great, awesome.
Thank you. And Ms. Mabley?
Welcome to the new members and thank you all for your continued good reports and helpful information.
Absolutely. I echo what everybody else said and I want to thank Aiman and Mika for orienting the new folks so well, as well as the new folks for coming on and joining us. As always, student reps are welcome to leave. You do not need to stay for the rest of the meeting. We will not be offended, but you are also welcome to stay because you're here now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are welcome. And now, we have the Superintendent's Report.
Well, awesome job from the student reps. And Ethan, thank you. You've taken one of the things off my list with the announcement about music, which is thrilling. So, tonight in the Superintendent's Report, first and foremost, we're really excited about presenting on the old business, our continued work to bring back grades K through 5 on April 5th, as well as our work moving forward to bring back students in 6 through 12. There's no substitution for in-person learning and we want to provide as much of that as we can to have students back and do so safely. So, we'll be presenting about that tonight. And important, survey information went out this week to K to 5 and then 6 to 8 and high school as well, 9 through 12. And we'll have, we'll be talking about some of that K to 5 data later tonight in the presentation. But we're really looking forward to starting to have students back full in-person in North Andover public schools. Couldn't be more thrilled. Second part is we have Brian LaGrasse here tonight and he'll be speaking, giving a health update. Ms. Marks and her team will be doing an elementary data presentation to see where our students are at. It's really important we know where our students are at so that they know, we continue to know what they need. And as we look forward to the rest of this spring and the summer, very important information. Also, before we get going, I want to talk about Pat McGravy. He was just actually named to the Civics Curriculum Teacher Advisory Panel. No shock for DESE. It's a pretty prestigious group of folks, hard to get on, but he's been really one of the leaders in the state in terms of civics. So, congratulations to Pat, one of our eighth grade history teachers over at NAMSS. So, next I'd like to introduce Brian LaGrasse. So, Brian's going to talk. We meet weekly. Brian's the Public Health Director here in North Andover. Cheryl's here tonight too as part of our COVID Task Force. And we meet every week and oftentimes more than once in the week. And he's going to talk about his support for us bringing back K to 5 and then continuing that work to bring back secondary students as well. So, he's going to give an update tonight. Brian?
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me again. I just want to give you guys a quick little update just about numbers and trends. As I'm sure you guys are all aware, Massachusetts and North Andover has been trending downward since our holiday spike. Currently, we have 47 active cases in town, not including some higher education cases that we have, which is dramatically lower than the 260 peak that we had through the holiday spike. We are currently a yellow community in the risk category again. We've been here for several weeks now, which is good. Our percent positivity rate is down below 1%. So, that's definitely going in the right direction. We're definitely happy about that. Currently, as of Monday, we entered into Phase 3 Step 2 of the reopening phase, which is basically back to where we were before the holiday spike. Essentially, everything is open to 50% capacity again. Restaurants went down, went back to just table spacing, not a capacity limit. So, retail, restaurants, offices, businesses are back to where they were before, back in the fall. We will be entering Phase 4 Step 1 as of March 22nd, which opens things up even more, which your indoor gathering increases to 100 and outdoor gatherings go to 150, among other things. So, that's good. That's really good news. I'm definitely happy to say that. Also, the Governor announced this weekend, as I'm sure you all know, that teachers are now eligible to get vaccinated as of March 11th through any of the state vaccination sites. The pharmacies are a little bit different. They receive their vaccine directly from the federal government, which has teachers eligible now. So, teachers can get vaccinated through a pharmacy or wait until next week and start getting vaccinated through the mass state sites. We have been actively trying to partner up with health center, hospitals, pharmacies, primary cares, to get our hands on vaccine to do teacher clinics. I have several irons in the fire right now, trying to see which one pans out. First, we can offer that to North Andover teachers, as well as any other schools in the area. If we can get that lineup for you, I will definitely let you know. Myself, my Board of Health, Town Administration is all trying to actively work on this because we know this is very important in getting kids back to school and having the staff and faculty safe. So, we've been working together with the school department for the last year on all aspects of this. We've been trying really hard to keep the kids in school and get kids back in for more in-learning person, in-person learning. And that's been definitely one of our priorities. I think with the new regulations coming out that Dr. Gilligan will talk about in a little bit, because of tomorrow, is pushing us in that direction. We all know that. I do think that it can be done safely with, they're talking about layered mitigation. So, all the mitigation strategies that we have, that we have our hands on and can access in terms of as much spacing as possible, mask-wearing, hygiene, ventilation. The weather is actually getting better now, so hopefully we can start opening windows again and not causing a problem. Just to give you an update as to what I've been seeing and witnessing over the past year, the majority of our cases in town have, the majority have been in-home family transmission and transmission from social gatherings. There has been very little workplace transmission and very little transmission in schools, even across the state and across the country. So, that's been being watched very, very closely since last fall. And it is proven to be effective and actually one of the safest places for kids to actually be if all the strategies are placed and they do things properly. One of those is mask-wearing and actually wearing the mask correctly. That's probably one of the biggest ones. So, I'm here for any questions you guys have throughout the presentation. Just let me know and we can kind of go from there.
So, why don't we pause for a minute and see if there are any questions right now for you, Brian? And I'll start with Ms. Lynch.
Nope, I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Teresi?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Brian, thanks for the report. Appreciate it. Just a couple of quick questions. I know my recollection is the health center did do one clinic, I think, at the youth center, maybe a few weeks ago. How did that come together? And you said you had a lot of coals in the fire, so to speak.
Yes.
What is the, what does it take to get that done? Is it just them having enough doses of vaccination or?
Yes.
Tell us a little more, Mark.
That's basically what it comes down to, is getting the vaccine. So, the pharmacies that I've talked to and I have a good relationship with, ones here in town, they're getting very little vaccine on a rolling basis, so they don't, and they can't save it. So, they can't hold it for two weeks or three weeks to get up enough to actually hold a large clinic, which is the problem with one of the pharmacies that I've been trying to work with. The pharmacy manager is actually going up the chain, trying to get her hands on more vaccine for us so we can actually do that, but she's not having any luck at this time. The Great Allarm Family Health Center was done through the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority could partner up with local health clinics or boards of health to get additional vaccine on top of our regular allotment. So, we worked together and partnered up to get vaccine for the Housing Authority. We got enough to do the Housing Authority plus another 150 North Andover residents and we had a list of several thousand that were 75 and over that we began reaching out to and people that had called us, we were able to sign them up for those appointments. So, we worked on the highest, the highest severity populations first and kind of get that done. So, you have two physicians on the board and another board member who works in the healthcare industry and they're all actually going up their chains of command, trying to get an allotment set aside for North Andover teachers.
Awesome. We appreciate their effort.
Which ever one pans out first, they get the gold star.
The next question is like, when you're talking to these folks, whether it's the pharmacy or the health center or the hospital, do you have a number in mind? You tell them I need 300 doses, 400 doses, like what are you, what are you asking for?
The survey that the school department did and Jim Lee got out there, I think came back with 553. I know teachers are now signing up to get their own vaccines. That will drop down. So, between that and I think the teachers at St. Mike's are also looking to get vaccinated as well. We have just under 600. So, that's what I'm shooting for. If we get 300, then we can start. So, any little bit will help and I'm just trying to chip away at it.
And last question, like how would that actually work? You would designate a site in town? And would our nurses actually do the administering of the vaccine or would the health center? I mean, are we just asking for their doses? Are we asking for their personnel? Just give me a little flavor of what we're asking for.
We have the staff ready to go if we get the vaccine. We've had the staff lined up, trained, and they did start at the beginning of this vaccination phase with doing all of our first responders. So, we do have the tools we need to do it. If a health center happens to get the vaccine and they have their own nurses and staff, by all means. But we do have the ability to do it ourselves if we have the actual vaccine.
Okay. Any, any, last question. I'm sorry, Brian. Any restrictions as far as, obviously, I think we've heard the original vaccinations, not the J and J one, but require, you know, sub, below gazillion degrees refrigerating. Do we have that? Do we need that on grounds here to do that?
We do have a freezer that does take care of the Moderna vaccine. And that's what we've been getting from the state since day one.
Okay.
As you know, our lab has got completely shut down a few weeks ago, which is
Yep.
a problem and I won't get into that whole issue. That's another separate topic altogether. But we have the storage capabilities for Johnson &amp; Johnson and the Moderna. The Fisberg we could get and keep refrigerated if we use it within X amount of time, which we will definitely do.
Brian, thanks for your update. I really appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. McDevitt?
Just a couple of quick questions. Mr. Teresi took a number of them, but thank you for all of your hard work, Brian. And I know we all appreciate the guidance that you've given the nursing team and Dr. Gilligan and certainly to advocate for the doses to kind of come in. I was encouraged, of course, to hear you say, you know, that, you know, we're not seeing necessarily the spread that's, I think people
necessarily the spread that's, I think people fear kind of within the schools. And, you know, you mentioned, of course, wearing masks and, you know, hand sanitizing and washing and all of those things. Is there anything additional that you would recommend that be encouraged as we start to look to bring students back on April 5th?
I think one of the things that is a strategy starts actually at home and out in the community. What we've seen for numbers in community spread versus school spread, schools are actually lower transmission rate than in the community. So it starts at home. That's your weekends, social gatherings, your sports gatherings, your sports teams. That's number one, starts at home. Number two is universal mask wearing, wearing them in school the entire time, wearing them properly, hand hygiene, ventilation, and then just being cognizant and aware as a student of what you're doing in schools. One of the things we've seen, too, is staff-to-staff transmission is actually higher because staff get comfortable with each other, they go to lunch. So staff-to-student transmission is non-existent. Student-to-student, when they're wearing masks and doing everything properly, is minimal at best. So it's just basically going through all of the strategies that we know work and just adhering to them. So, I mean, contact tracing, isolation, quarantine, if that happens, then, I mean, we do contact tracing at, as soon as there's a positive case comes through. Your staff have been fantastic helping us do that in the schools. So isolating and quarantining is one of the methods that we use that does work. So if somebody is quarantined, they have to adhere to that. Some people get a little lax and still go to hockey practice or dance class when they're not supposed to. Things like that is what we kind of want to work on and figure out.
Okay, great. One last question, kind of put you on the spot here a little bit, but, you know, I think our families have done a really good job of, you know, kind of keeping students home if there was a close contact, you know, hey, maybe there's a little bit of some sniffles, right? We're not going to send the kid to school just to make sure. You know, I know a number of families who said, you know, I'd rather just be safe than sorry, I don't want my kid to be that kid, right? So based on, I think, what I believe is some really good partnership with people in the community on that, do you have thoughts on the pool testing? I think a lot of families think it makes them feel comfortable, right? Because they're that asymptomatic kid who may be in the classroom, maybe we pick up on that. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that, you know, families have been so diligent and cautious, right, about not sending their kids to school if they think that there's a possible exposure. And now, you know, we're starting to see, you know, family members, extended family members start to get vaccinated. So do you have any thoughts on, on that? I mean, I hear both sides of it, but I appreciate your insight.
I think any mitigating strategy you have is a bonus. So testing is always one of the topics you want to do. Pool testing, very labor intensive, and it's very expensive. So this is a return on investment. So that's up for you guys to decide as a school district because it's your personnel doing the testing and it's your budget. But any additional tactics and strategies that we can use to test and trace, isolate and quarantine is a bonus. But I've heard through some colleagues of mine that it is very, very difficult to get these up and running, and it's very, very labor intensive. So that's a broader question that I will defer back to the school department on, but obviously, in public health, testing, tracing, isolating, quarantining, and any other strategies you can implore do help.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt, and Ms. Maybley.
So my main question is around contact tracing, and you did talk about that. And I guess I'm asking, if you're hearing gossip out there, but I know that there used to be a 14-day quarantine, was dropped down to the 10-day quarantine, and from what I understand, you have to, even if you have a negative test, you still have to do the 10 days? Is that correct?
It actually dropped down to a negative test after day five is a seven-day quarantine, you're released on day eight.
Excellent.
So seven, 10, or 14.
Okay. So they have, that was going to be my question, have you been hearing if they're going to make it less restrictive?
I have not.
Okay.
I think seven and being released on day eight is probably as low as it's going to go, just because of the incubation period, then the testing period, and then what they've seen is the majority of people present within three to five days.
Okay.
So you test on day five or even a little bit after, then you can get released.
Excellent. So that's, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much.
All right. So that's down to me, and I appreciate all the questions my colleagues asked, and I'm not going to add any questions at this time, but I reserve the opportunity to come back to you later, Brian. I really do appreciate, you know, I know you've put in a lot of long hours, and I know you've worked very closely with, with us in the schools, and you've really been a tremendous help to us, so I appreciate that. All right, back to you, Dr. Gilligan.
Yeah. So Brian, thank you so much. Like I said, we've become very close this year, and Cheryl Bazak and the work of our nurses in putting us in a position to educate everyone on all of these mitigation strategies and put us in a position for pool testing and everything else moving forward is really critical. So thank you. We have coming up next on the agenda, I am going to turn it over to, if Ms. Bazak has nothing to add, I'll turn it over to Ms. Marks to talk about the elementary data presentation and her team, and, and then later we'll get back with our team to old business about, talking about bringing kids back K-12. Ms. Marks.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Jim. I just wanted to take a minute to again thank all the teachers that are here tonight. I know it's a lot after your very busy, busy days, so thank you. And I know that you have all spent a lot of time looking at the data, and I think our teachers have a lot to be very proud of. So thank you for being here tonight. So we are going to present our assessment data relative to grades one through five this evening. So just a quick recap, in the spring, about a year ago, we got all this chatter about something big happening, and all of a sudden, schools closed down. March 16th and 17th, we used our beyond the classroom days. You recall that whole process we went through for a few years to be able to count some remote learning as time on learning days. From March 18th through April 3rd, we provided supportive, supporting enrichment activities, different activities for different grade levels and different content areas. Then, beginning April 6th through May 8th, we moved into Phase Two, and we were revisiting with direct instruction and assignments by our teachers, content that had been previously taught. And then from May 11th through the end of the year, we moved into Phase Three, where we really looked at the priority content standards that Desi had proposed, and our coaches provided a lot of support for teachers around this in terms of literacy and math work. So and there's just some examples. I know in prior meetings, I shared a lot of the coaching documents. So part of that was to help maintain that consistent curriculum across the five elementary schools for our students. The assessments that we currently use are the DIBELS Eight, which is a universal literacy screener for grades one and two. We use the MAP testing for reading and math in grades three through five. We've also piloted this test in some grades one and two classrooms, and we are considering purchasing that for those grades next year as we move forward. We use the assessment provided through Lexia, which is again, an online tool for literacy. We also started using the Phinemic Awareness Baseline Assessment, otherwise referred to as the PABA, in grade one, and I'm not going to get into the details of that right now, but as we go through the presentation, you'll hear a little bit more about why we brought that assessment in and what that data has afforded us. We also have ST math data. We've had ST math in the district for a few years. It is again, an online program, and it is something that is also supported through a grant for our teachers. And then there are numerous classroom assessments that all of our teachers do. They do end-of-module assessments, they do unit assessments. In the primary grades, we do foundations probes, they do exit tickets, they're constantly doing formative assessment with their students. Who was assessed? So between fall and winter, there were over 8,000 individual assessments completed. So if you look in the column, there are the assessments that I already spoke about, and the percentage of students was something that was important to us. So this is our data from the fall, but we had 93 or more percent of our students participate in all of those assessments. That was something that we felt was important to look at because we didn't know how that was really going to work with our students who were remote. So we were very proud of that, and we feel like it gave us a really good idea of where our students were at. At this point, I'm going to turn this over to Cara to talk a little bit about the MAP testing.
Thanks, Lorraine. So again, I'm going to talk about the MAP assessment that we give our students. So this is our sixth year using NWA's MAP Growth Assessment in grades three, four, and five. It's given three times a year in both reading and math, and it's a norm reference assessment. The most recent norm data came out in 2020, so just last year, and it looked at 10 million students across the United States and collected three years of data to give us a comparable measurement. So we're able to take the norms and compare students' achievement status and changes or their, their growth and their achievement status across students in the same grade level. And again, that's nationally ranked data. So we'll be talking about the percentile rank, and again, that's based on the national norm comparison of their grade level peers. And they do that at fall, winter, and spring. So it does depend on the time of year that the assessment is given. It is an adaptive assessment, so students take this online. As a student gets through questions, they get more or less challenging questions based on their responses to hone in on right where they are ready for instruction and what they're ready to learn next. So this can benefit both our general education teachers and our special education teachers to work with all students. It's important to note that it's not a mastery assessment, that again, it's looking at a wide range of questions across all domains and academic standards throughout their grade level, but also it can, as it's adaptable, go above grade level and below grade level to really tailor and hone in on where those students are. So there was a, a lot of predictive studies from NWA in the spring to look and see what has happened with past school closures such as Hurricane Katrina. And then in the fall, they took all of the students who were assessed, and they used that data to provide us with some, some helpful information. So they looked at 4.4 million students across grades three through eight and looked at their fall 2019 scores, which you see in the slide in that kind of reddish shade, I'm going to call it red just for simplicity, and then that teal color shows the fall 2020 data. And what we've seen is that the, the reading data showed some continued great gains, not a significant change between fall 2019 and fall 2020. In the math data is where we saw some unfinished learning. And you'll note in the national data that for grades three, four, and five, the national norm, national average percentile rank was below the 50th percentile. So underwear, they typically would be in the fall, and more significant compared to the 2019 data. Can you go to the next slide? I have the, our data within North Andover Public Schools. So again, this is showing grades three, four, and five, the comparison of reading data in fall 2019 in that red color and the, I'm sorry, this is the winter side. So in the fall, we looked at the same data. We wanted to bring you, again, we're glad we were able to present tonight because we have the winter data. The winter assessment period just ended right before February vacation, so this is the most recent data that we have available to us. And again, the red is the winter 2020, and the bluish-green is the winter 2021 data. And you'll notice, again, consistent with the national norms, we see pretty consistent with our reading. You'll notice that in grade four, we actually improved compared to last winter, and again, a change with some unfinished learning in the math areas. However, you'll note that it's not quite as significant as the national data shows. So we have taken this a step further, and we can look at those different percentiles. So if we look at a percentile rank that a student falls under, if they're in the high category, if their percentile rank is 80 percentile or higher, and then you can see the breakdown at the bottom there, 61 to 80 is high average and so on. So you'll notice the number of students across reading in 2019 in the fall and the winter is pretty, pretty similar. We don't see significant changes, slight increases in those low and low average, but not a huge shift to the data in the fall and the winter compared to last year and this year. In math, on the next side, you'll notice, again, just like we saw with the average percentile ranking, we've seen this shift of where students are. We don't have as many students that scored within that high and high average percentile, more have fallen in the average, and we have some, some increases in the low average and low, low percentiles. The next piece that we look at, so we look at this in lots of different ways, we have the ability to work with all of our principals. Kristin, Ando, and I have gone out and met with principals, and we've worked with, at the teacher level, they've taken this data, and we're looking across domains. So now that we know kind of where those averages are, what does that mean for us in terms of where that learning loss is? So this shows the goal areas or strands, domains across reading for the winter of 2020 and the winter of 2021. And you'll notice that those bands, some of them are probably hard to read, but the bands are pretty similar. We didn't see a really large change, a couple small shifts with where students are, but pretty consistent with their knowledge across their reading domains. And again, as you can probably imagine, in math, we do see some more changes on that next slide that we have more, you know, just as we saw. But what this really is important to us is that we can see across the entire district where those needs are, but more importantly, we can do this for any grade level at every school. And so one thing that we noted is it wasn't consistent across all. So even though they all had a similar gaps and unfinished learning in last spring, the data really across grade levels and across different schools varied, and you'll hear from the principals that next level of work that they have all done and are working on with their teachers to address those unfinished learning areas. We're also able to identify the high need students, and many of our students, as we see in that red band, often are high need students that are already receiving some services and support from our special education teachers. So we'll continue to examine that, and you'll hear more from our, our schools a little bit.
Before you move off of that slide, can you go back to that slide for just a second? Can you read some of the categories that are at the bottom of those? I think that would help people understand what you mean by strains and domains.
Yep, absolutely. I can see, I'm trying to make them large enough, make sure I'm not misreading. So within across math, so we can see the geometry, we can see algebraic thinking and numbers and operations. So it's, it's again aligned to our standards, and those four are different. So operations and algebraic thinking is the first column. The second chart is numbers and operations. The third is measurement and data, and the fourth is geometry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a clarifying question here, too? So that is all of our students, three to five lumped together?
Correct.
Okay.
And so what we have done with principals and across each school, we've looked more, we've honed in across and, and broken this out, so we can see for, actually, we pulled the last three years of data to look at trends and patterns in both grades three, four, and five, and across each school individually. So all the principals have looked at that data, really a deeper dive across all of these domains and strands, both in reading and math.
This paints a pretty nice picture of where it is, but I think it's misleading. I think it's misleading because we're grouping together three, four, five.
Yep. And again, we've looked at it in deeper in each principal, and you'll see in our principals, we'll be speaking to which areas they, they are focusing in on and where they're noticing at their individual schools across each grade level.
Let's save our, our questions and comments for the end. I just wanted that, you know, that clarifying, what was actually we were looking at?
I'm going to pass it over to Kristin.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to be sharing some of the literacy data that we've been collecting this year. First is the DIBELS, and I know you've heard about the DIBELS before, but it's based on 20 years of research and development. And the DIBELS is a screener designed to identify and progress monitor students for future reading difficulties. It's a universal screener. We benchmark students three times a year, more often if needed. It is not a diagnostic tool. It is not a, it's a, it's a tool that's meant to indicate risk, not diagnose reading difficulty or reading disability. And so we are, the scores are used to determine risk levels for future success. For fall 2021, we are going to be adding an additional universal screener. As far as the DIBELS, we've looked at this data lots of different ways with the teams. We've looked at data last fall to this fall, we've looked at winter to winter, we've looked at fall to winter. Within the DIBELS, grade one has five subtests and grade two has three subtests. I'll show you some of them, not all of them, because we'd be here all night, but, but we've looked at this data very different ways. We're going to show you the We're going to show you the district-wide data. What Cara and I have done is worked with principals and teachers on their individual team data. So this first, this first slide describes that when we came to school in the fall, we anticipated some gaps for our incoming grade one students who had less access to literacy instruction because their kindergarten experience was interrupted. So what we did is we targeted grade one in the fall of 2020 with our reading interventionists using the Hegarty, which is Hegarty Teachers Phrenemic Awareness, which is one of the major components in reading success. And we also took the phrenemic awareness baseline data on all of our first graders so that we could have a, you know, an additional data point to watch these students as they entered into the year. But we targeted grade one with reading intervention, anticipating and knowing from our data. So this data is fall to fall data and our, you know, our other measures look the same way. So we targeted our first graders at the start of the year. Jim, will you switch to the next one for me? The next three or four slides I'm going to show you are different subtests for the data. This one is the phoneme segmentation fluency. Our grade one data varies by subtest. So there are five subtests in the first grade. And depending on which subtest it is, we have different, this, we have different data. And so the idea that this helps teachers narrow in on what particular skills in reading that students need help with. And so we noticed that in this phoneme segmentation fluency, we had more kids at moderate risk. We, what we've done as a district is that we've implemented the Hegarty Phrenemic Awareness Program in January. So in the fall, all of our reading interventionists, some of our special educators and some of our EL teachers started using Hegarty. And in January, we provided PD for all of our teachers in grades one and two. And so we anticipate that we will be practicing more of our phrenemic awareness skills going forward. Jim, will you switch to the next one for me? The data looks a little different in the subtest word reading fluency. Grade one, where in the winter, we have less students at risk than we did in the fall. And so, Jim, we used to turn again. Grade two, in grade two, the picture looks a lot different than in grade one. And so this shows this last winter to this winter, we have less kids who are at risk in this particular subs, subskill of reading. And in grade two, another way to look at it, word reading fluency. In word reading fluency, we have slightly more risk this winter compared to last winter. And so we've been looking with teachers and teams at this data in many different ways in order to, you know, zero in on where kids might have some learning gaps and how to move them forward. Next slide, thanks. Two ways we've been doing this is with Lexia, which is an online program that is one of the most rigorously researched, independent evaluated perspective programs in the world. And so you can see down there the different components of reading that Lexia addresses. So you'll be hearing later about how Lexia is being implemented in classrooms. And I've already talked about the phrenemic awareness curriculum through Hegarty that we're working through because phrenemic awareness is one of the major components of reading success as well. On the next slide, you'll see our Lexia usage. This is another data point we look at that overall Lexia usage, Lexia, we have, all of our students are using Lexia. Lexia usage, the way we measure this is Lexia sets based on the student's skill set, how many minutes a week that students need in order to, to meet benchmarks. And so sometimes it'll be 45 minutes, it can be upwards of 80 minutes. And so we have upwards of 70% of our students using Lexia to the extent to, to its fullest. And so we can also break this down by grade level. And again, we're showing you the district data, but we've worked with principals and teams to break down Lexia usage data by grade level. And our reading coaches have also worked with teachers to get down to like individual students and individual skill levels. On the next slide, you'll sort of, you'll see an overview. If you think of learning to read as opening a door with many different complex locks, you'll just see an overview of the different components of our curriculum. Some keys are covered by the units of study, love of reading and choice, oral language development and vocabulary and comprehension. Phonics and decodable text are in the green key there, the idea. And then the brand, the new key we're adding this year is around phrenemic awareness. And you'll see there Lexia addresses all of those components. So learning to read is a very complex system. And so we're working with teams in order to help best support students. And so we're looking at all this data and you may be asking like, what are we doing with the data? Or what frame might be looking at the data? But we are using, so we are using the DataWise system, which is out of the Harvard Graduate School of Education. You can see the DataWise arrow there. We're very proud to say that we've had 117 individual data meetings with teachers between the coordinators and the coaches. We've also had principal and teacher leader data meetings as well as professional learning sessions, some PD sessions with teachers around the DataWise process. And so the DataWise process is our framework that we use to effectively look at data and implement changes in classrooms. My last slide shows you just some facets of our coaching work. Again, the coaches have had individual data meetings with all of our teachers in grades one through five, at least one. And they're also putting out like many, many, many pages of curriculum materials and videos, student work, all sorts of. And we have anecdotal and survey data that many of our teachers are using these. We also have many parent comments complimenting our coaches on the instruction that's going out virtually. So from here, I'll pass it back to Cara to talk about elementary math.
So we use Eureka as our main curriculum for math and it is a paper-based product. And so teachers do have access to digital files. They can project lessons. They can pull problem sets and share that out with students. But we knew that it would be a little tricky to adapt all of that digitally. So Zern is a product that we purchased. It is an online product and it is fully aligned to Eureka. So it works through the exact same lessons and the same components that Eureka does, but in a digital way. It's adaptive to students. So as they work through an independent practice, they get coached and, and provide structures and support to work through that. And again, our teachers are using a lot of data from Zern to help drive instruction. They might be using it before a lesson to preview material for, for students. They might use it after teaching content so students can have some more independent practice. And then our third component is ST Math, which as Lorraine mentioned, we've been using a few years. We came in and shared some information and had some student presentations with you last year. It is also online and it is adaptive. So as students work through questions, they receive feedback from the program to help them build a better and a deeper understanding. It is conceptual in their development and really works on their problem solving skills. It doesn't contain any language. And so it's a product that even our youngest learners can access because they don't need to know how to read in order to work through that program. So our teachers have a lot of data that we collect around ST Math. The program did totally change this year because it was in Java, so they needed to, or Flash rather, so they needed to rebuild it all. So they are still building out some of the new reports and we're excited to have more access to those. We, again, just like Lexia, the, the goal is getting students on. So we have weekly usage reports that are, are shared with us to see where they're working. So students work through an objective, which is much like those standards we mentioned at the beginning, those topics that they're learning about. They play games that have various levels and individual puzzles. So we have about 1,710 students in grades one through five who have completed over a million puzzles. And we're close and I should have checked this morning, we're probably over that 10,000 objective point. And so again, you can see in the usage, any given day or week, a student might not be logging in as consistently. And that's where there's some fluctuations between those numbers. And you'll see those gaps for vacation weeks. We do have some students who have been using it on vacation. I'm trying to urge my kiddos, but they're, they're not always, always geared up to do that, that logging in. So we do have some usage across the vacation weeks. It is available to students. And within that data, I wanted to give you a few examples of the data that we collect, especially in grades one and two, since we don't do MAP testing in grades one and two. So for every objective that students work through, teachers receive objective progress. So on the right-hand side, you can see at the top, it says number and operations in base 10. So that's our domain in math. And underneath it lists the standard that a particular objective is working on. And one thing you'll notice is that not all students are working through the same objectives in the same order, which is why you'll see that row at the bottom in green. You know, one student kind of has a gap the second row over and has, is the only one that has completed 100% in a particular objective. So teachers have the ability to realign and reorder based on the needs for individual students. And so this shows kind of the progress. We can see who's working on a particular objective and who has completed it. This is just a snapshot. If we continue this out, there are more objectives that we have single or, you know, one or two students working through. Can you switch to the next slide? Again, showing that progress in second grade, the objectives that have been complete and students are working on. Another great feature is in data that we collect and receive is the alerts report. So a student has the ability to try puzzles over and over again. And it gives us alert of how often they need to try a lesson or a puzzle more than once. So you'll notice in green, those are students who completed that with one try. And then if they had to try it more than one times, it shows up in white, yellow. And then more than two, I believe, three and higher shows up in red. So we get those alerts to know which students are having trouble getting through these puzzles. And then teachers work with individual students to support them through that process. The third piece of information that we get or another piece is the quiz course. So in grades two, three, four, and five, every student takes a pre-quiz and a post-quiz for each objective that they work through. So you'll see across the, this snapshot that the students who have completed these different objectives in the, for the most part, are scoring, I know, above 70%. So another data point. The idea is that in ST Math, if you've completed an objective, it shows that you've mastered that objective because you didn't get stuck on several puzzles or levels in games. But this is an additional piece and the post score really relates more to what they see within Eureka because it gives them, it does include language. And so they're asked more traditional questions that they would see in a classroom or on an assessment. And so it's, it's taking that knowledge they've gained in a puzzle and now applying it to different problems. So a lot of different data that we collect. I'm going to pass it to Lorraine.
All right. So where do we go from here? So that was a picture of our elementary schools and different data collected in grades one through five. So I think both Cara and Kristin mentioned the data meetings that take place. So data meetings have happened with the principals and grade level teachers. And they asked a question, looking at the data, where do we go from here? What standards or domains are a grade level or a classroom struggling with? And what students are struggling since last year? How do I, how do we identify those and identify a plan to intervene with those students? So at this point, I'm going to turn it over and each principal is going to talk about some specifics related to the data. So as Cara and Kristin both mentioned, we showed you the broad data across the district for those grades. Each principal and their teachers were able to look at that data specifically for their schools. And that's what they'll speak to, how they took that data and implemented plans for improvement and intervention. And we'll start with Mr. Clark at Franklin School.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Marks, and thanks, School Committee, for having each of us here. It's always a pleasure to be with you guys on a Thursday evening. Before we get started. That wasn't a joke, guys. Before we get started, on behalf of the other principals, I would like to echo what Ms. Marks started the, started the presentation with and expressing gratitude for our teachers for coming out tonight, taking time away from their families and maybe even more likely, taking time away from their planning time for their students. So thank you to all the teachers that came out from all five elementary schools. And just to kind of frame it for you guys, before we get started, you know, when we think about the presentation that we've seen so far, you're right. You know, you brought up that this is all three grade levels altogether for the whole district. But like Cara and Kristin and Lorraine kind of explained, we've all had the opportunity to break it down in our own schools. And we've talked all about this, the five principals, five elementary principals have talked about this a lot. And there's a lot that we want to celebrate here. Like we have a great amount of solid data. And that is truly thanks, thanks to all of the hard work of our North Andover teachers and our North Andover students. We know, we, we know they've been working their tails off all year under the most difficult of circumstances. And, you know, although we, we acknowledge that there are things that they're likely missing out on throughout this year, we principals talk all the time about how it's equally important that we recognize the skills that they've gained and the positive experiences that they've had. So just a huge thank you to all of our teachers and all of our students. And I would be remiss not to thank our parents, who we know are supporting our students while they're working at home. And they've really shown a great support to our teaching staff. You know, but as always, you know, we can talk about the data and there's always things to celebrate. But the five of us are going to talk about looking at the data in areas for potential growth. You're going to hear from each of us about some school-specific items. As you know, we have some teachers here to help us and they're going to illustrate, you know, a snapshot of what's happening in our schools. You'll probably hear common threads as each of the five of us kind of goes throughout a little spiel for you. But you'll also hear some differences in some different ways that the schools may be addressing needs. I think it's important to note that just because, you know, one school says, hey, we're doing this or we're doing X, Y, or Z, doesn't mean the other schools aren't doing it. That's just what they chose to highlight this afternoon or this evening. And it's, you know, we talk about positive takeaways and the five of us talk all the time about one of the most positive takeaways from this. We've always been a great team, but the level of collaboration, the level of camaraderie that the principals have come together with throughout this, over this past year is unbelievable. And that also includes Dr. Goddard, Mr. Jackson, and Mr. Goncalves too. We are truly a unified team and we're looking up and down from pre-K all the way to graduation of making this North Andover consistent and rigorous. And that's what we talk about all the time. You know, and although there have been things that are very different this year, this presentation tonight about looking at data, it's not different. We look at data all the time. It's all about thinking about what we find from our students and how we use that to impact our instruction. And I'll tell you, North Andover teachers are some of the best in the business at analyzing that data. We're always assessing our students, reviewing that data, identifying trends and needs, and then adjusting our practice to address those needs in that consistent, rigorous manner. So just kind of frame it for you guys. And now I guess I'll jump right into my Franklin slide since it's been up there and I'm sure you've all read it by now. So I probably don't even have to go. I can probably just pass it to the next principal, right? I mean, it's been up there for a few minutes. Now, I guess, I guess I'll go. So Franklin, we were, you know, we were really proud. We were looking at a lot of the data. And when we're looking at the literacy data, DIBELS is kind of the one that we, we decided to focus on. It was, it jumped out at us a little bit. And as you heard from Kristin, you know, our first graders are showing a lot of need. And in the fall, 30% of them didn't meet the, didn't meet the identified DIBELS benchmark at least one of the subtests. Now, there are about 19 subtests in the fall first grade DIBELS assessment. And within our own little circles, you know, we weight some of them a little bit more heavily than others as we're looking at students and the predictors of, you know, success moving forward. And we saw improvement from fall to winter, but we still have, you know, about 21% not meeting at least one benchmark. And about half of the students that didn't meet at least one benchmark only didn't meet one benchmark, which I think is important. So, you know, we have been introduced and trained and really implemented this Hegarty Phrenemic Awareness resource this year. And we're getting a lot of positive feedback. We're getting a lot of positive results with an increased fidelity and consistency of use of that resource each and every day. Our teachers are really working hard to learn, continue to learn more about it and to continue to implement it in their classrooms. You know, Cara and Kristin and Lorraine mentioned the curriculum coaches and the data meetings. And I got to tell you, Jackie Taylor and Ann Joyce are amazing. They have, they really come down and they have real conversations with our teachers. You know, all five of us principals, we sat in on every single one of them so far. For me, one day was a remote day, so I had my camera off a few times and I was listening while I was doing dishes or picking up Grace and throwing her over my shoulder. But we were listening and participating in all of those meetings. And it was really empowering to hear our coaches and our teachers speaking the same language and moving forward and talking about what is in the best interest of this kid. They might look at little Brian and say, okay, this is where I want Brian to go next. How am I going to get him there? And then maybe when they came back for the next data meeting, they said, okay, you know what? I saw that growth in Brian. I see the same trend happening with Jamie. I'm going to make sure that Jamie, we're going to work on the same things and hit those strategies and make him move forward too. And then finally, you know, our grade two data, it, it's okay. It looks pretty good. And we And we want to continue to target the focus of our reading interventionists on the grade one. It's our, you know, we think about our youngest learners, that introduction to reading, building those foundational skills. And we want to make sure that we're addressing the needs as early as we can. Now, don't take, I don't want you to take that wrong way, we're not ignoring our second graders. You know, again, we look at the big picture and we also break it down to the student picture. And we make sure that we're addressing all the students that need our most support. And this year in particular, we're, we're aiming that a little bit more towards first grade. Speaking of first grade and second grade, I would like to kick it over just for a little snapshot, give a little story here for us to paint a picture. I brought Mrs. Coleman, who has come to one of these with me before to speak about her multi-age classroom. So I I'll turn the mic over to her for just a moment.
Gee, thanks, Joe.
Anytime.
All right, well, listen, despite all the obstacles that this wonderful year has thrown at us. You know, my kids are learning, we figured out ways to work around the challenges. That the schedule presents and everything else, the distance and all of that. But like one of the things that I find that I'm doing is with my kids on their asynchronous days and those check-ins that I'm doing with them. I'm using that Hagerty program. And working with them in that environment. And the nice thing that I like about that is that the kids online with me, those are the ones that I'm really focusing with. Using the Hagerty, but because I'm doing it right in my classroom in the morning when the other kids are there, even though I might not be calling on them. Well, they always listen in regardless of whether I ask them to do their own thing or not. So they're getting it, but they're not maybe participating fully in it, but they're getting to hear it. They get it on their days when they're home. I'm also using it on my remote day Wednesday. And again, so then everybody's getting it. So basically, my kids are getting Hagerty consistently three days a week. And it it is making a difference, it's helping to build skills that maybe they didn't have. Or they were just starting to get. Or it's solidifying those skills that they were almost there for. So being able to do that a lot is good. Um, the other thing that I have done in my classroom, and it was a result of what happened at parent conferences is November. I went to Joe a couple of days after conferences and I just said overwhelmingly, my parents. Said, remote Wednesday was too much time for the kids to be on Google meets. And so I revamped my schedule and I pretty much teach solidly from the time we get on in the morning until the kids go to lunch. Then my kids go to lunch, they go to their special and then in the afternoon. My kids go on and they access Lexia and they access S T math and they access Zern. But they also get to access me, they also get to, or they access my teaching assistant. Every kid on those remote Wednesdays has an individual or small group. Time slot to read with us. And I have to say, it has been phenomenal. I have seen so much growth in my children as far as their reading level. As far as their ability to problem solve at points of difficulty. Their fluency has increased since I started that. And most of my parents, we did a survey the end of January, most of my parents. Really responded that frustration levels had not gone up. In fact, many of my kids, their frustration levels with Wednesday had gone down. And everybody seemed happier and the kids really liked it. Additionally, because I use the same link for the kids. When I'm reading with a child, another child comes in and I've taught them to come in with their, their camera off and their mic off. But they're listening in and they can see what we're doing. And then when we finish reading a book, I'll say, you know, hey, Cohen, what did you think of your friend? You know, did you notice something they did? And so they're, they're acting like coaches to their kids. The way that the Lucy Cawkins reading workshop is set up to have those reading partners. Because reading partners are your coaches, so they're getting to experience that. Right online on Wednesdays, which has been awesome. The other thing, I'm trying to, lost my place in my notes here. Oh, the other thing that I found really helpful for me is I do have my kids doing RASD kids. And I've taught my kids how to do recordings and it's been a great way for me to consistently do running records. I use those running records obviously to drive my instruction. It really allows me to see, oh, I've got a kid that's getting ready to move up. Or I really need to focus in a, on a particular, particular skill or something that they need in reading. I think the bottom line is though, is that with the changes that I've made, my kids are learning. You know, they're not, I don't see them falling behind, everybody's on the right trajectory. They're making their way towards those end of year benchmarks. And if they keep the trajectory that they're on now. Most of my kids, I feel confident will benchmark at the end of the year. And additionally, my kids are happy and they're proud of their accomplishments and their successes. Even with all the stuff that has been thrown at us this year. So Joe, I'm gonna kick it back to you now.
Thank you, Mrs. Coleman. And the weather report. That was awesome, thanks Denise. Appreciate the time that you took, took out your data to come and help us with this, but also obviously the time that you put in with your kids. Moving right along to math, so looking at our map data. And like Cara said, we've been using this for a number of years now, so our teachers are so adept to. Pouring through the reports and finding what they need and really being able to pare it down and figure out where are the trends, where are the patterns? So when we were looking at this data, you know, we saw a lot, if you think back to those graphs. Or the bar graph, I guess, that Cara had up earlier with, where the three, four, five were all together. It was the blue, the green, the orange, the yellow, the red, that one, right? So for most of what we saw, the fluctuations, we we definitely saw fluctuations. You know, our blue bar might have got a little smaller and a green bar got a little bigger. And we saw a lot of the fluctuations between that. High performing and high average performing. But when we really pared it down, we're looking at fifth grade, for example, we found that. It even extended down into kind of the orange and the yellow, that average and that low average. The bars, so in operations and algebraic thinking, and operations and algebraic thinking in fifth grade is. It's like using parentheses, right? And solving those equations, writing those equations and being able to manipulate those and figure out the order, what is it, PEMDAS and all that good stuff. And then also analyzing patterns and relationships. So we kind of, we broke that one down a little bit and we're trying, we were trying to look at it and figure out more specifically where we were going. So as we do that type of stuff, and we do this all the time. But as we do that, one of the things that we're focusing on is we're really focusing on spiraling these concepts. Where we find unfinished learning and spiraling it into our current lessons, spiraling it into our modules. Some ways that we do that is we utilize S T math. Cara did a nice job explaining how teachers have that ability to. Switch things around and really tailor it to each individual student's need. So whatever concepts they might need that extra support in, we can manipulate S T math to help us get them there. And then again, some targeted tier one intervention. For those students not performing at that high and high average levels, because we want to get them there or get them back up there. To see, to show what they're capable of. I mean, there's no denying that there's unfinished learning from last year. I mean, we missed three months at the end of the year. But the growth that we've been able to see has been incredible. And again. That's not to say that there aren't areas for growth, because there are, and this is one of them. But I think it's really important that we focus, you know, it's all about balance, right? So let me kick it over to Mr. Hotnet, again, I brought Mr. Hotnet to speak a little bit to what's going on in five D for us.
Hi, everyone. Before I begin, I just want to echo Joe's appreciation for the, for the district coaches. They really have been just amazing this year and very supportive for this unique year that we're all facing. In regards to topic one, when introducing new lessons in math, my students reference previously learned strategies as we discuss the lesson objectives. We identify key terms and the overall language of the lesson. Once the new concept is introduced, my students are encouraged to build upon previously learned strategies. And other lessons to find what works best for them. So for example, this week I introduced a lesson which was the subtraction of unlike units on a number line. While learning the strategy, my students were able to reference the conversion of unlike units into, into improper fractions. Which was a previously taught lesson. Students demonstrate their understanding of both strategies, but have the flexibility in choosing the one that best fits their own learning. In addition, when applicable, when applicable, I take opportunities to preview concepts that the students will be exposed in future modules. For example, yesterday during our remote whole class learning, I was able to preview the multiplication of a whole number by a fraction. Which is topic C of module four. By previewing it now, I can start to incorporate it as a daily warm-up or even an exit ticket. I really want to take a pause here and just say. Very impressed how fluent everyone is, I don't know if you can tell, I'm kind of nervous right now, so I have my written script, so I appreciate it. In regards to topic two, S T math, as Cara mentioned, S T math, it it does utilize puzzles to help build a conceptual understanding. Of the grade level concepts. Because the program is self-guided, students in my class mostly use the program during their asynchronous days. As a supplemental resource to either preview or review math concepts. Zern gives the students an opportunity to apply the skills we have learned together in class. And apply them to their asynchronous learning. So what that means, for example, is this week I taught a lesson on Monday with my cohort A kids. I use the Eureka materials as I teach the lesson, they show understanding of the concept. And then on Tuesday, they practice the strategy independently on Zern. With, with Zern, I'm able to see my students' progress and do check-ins as needed when we meet together as a cohort. Or a whole group the following day. In addition, as Cara had mentioned before, both applications as well as embark, which is the, which is the Eureka resource. Provide printable resources to help ensure the students have access to grade level material. And I do take, take pieces of that as well as part of my instruction. In regards to targeting one instruction this year, within a given year. When a student is struggling, I am able to work with them one-on-one and deliver the specific instruction they need. When we're working together during the remote Wednesdays, I am able to provide breakout rooms in our Google meetings. For either specific students or small groups of students who may be struggling with a, with a strategy. During this time, I reinforce, review or offer additional strategies for students who need further guidance. As always, the end goal of fifth grade is to encourage students to take ownership of their learning. And build a personal toolbox of strategies that work best for them. By doing this, it builds their confidence in learning and the understanding that everyone learns in different ways. Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot, Mike, nice job. Nice, nice job laying that out for us. Mike is, is someone who served our country, but the North Andover School Committee has him sweating a little bit, I guess.
I do guess, that is correct, I'm sorry, Ricardo over there giving me the thumbs up, so I appreciate it.
So thank you both Denise and Mike. And like I said, that it's a snapshot, that's what's happening in MA, that's what's happening in five D. All of our teachers are doing. Things like that, doing different things, they're targeting the students that need it and they're targeting the unfinished learning. That we want to continue to build up and strengthen once again. And with that, I would like to pass the mic over to the Atkinson principal, Mrs. O'Laughlin.
And really important to note, thank you there, Mr. Clark, excellent presentation. And I know we'll continue to move, Ms. Marks will continue to move us through this as well, so great setup, I know it took some time to set up. And we will post this online as well, but we'll go through this, I know people are also anxious about. Old business as well, so Ms. Marks, Atkinson's next.
Hi, everyone. Thanks, Joe, just want to reiterate like Joe mentioned, how proud we are of all of our staff and students. We are so appreciative of all the efforts that everyone has put forth this year. I am a much faster talker, so I'm gonna fly right through this. So in regards to ELA, after attending about fourteen data meetings with first and second grade teachers and our literacy coaches. Phonemic awareness came up as an area of focus for these two grade levels. There's many resources being used in both first and second grade, including foundations, Lexia, Hagerty, phonemic awareness program. We've also identified a lot like Joe had mentioned, first grade students. And again, not dismissing second grade students, but first grade students based on our Dibbles data and Hagerty phonics assessment. Really needing more support with the phonemic awareness. So what we've done is we've had a few teaching assistants. In addition to our reading specialists, meet one-on-one, we've started with first grade students. And we've identified those who aren't. Getting support from our reading specialists, but have scored lower on our Dibbles. And what they do is they go for one-on-one intervention with some of our other support. And they are working on getting basically a deck, a second dose of foundations. So they're working more on high frequency words, phrases, reading stories fluently and working on the comprehension piece. And what we're doing is we're moving this through cycles of about six weeks. So data is kept on these students daily and once these students kind of progress through. We continue to work through the first grade and then we will move into second grade and do that same type of system with the second graders. So our first grade teachers were early adopters of the Hagerty phonics program. They contacted the literacy. And they've all been trained in the program and they're using the program daily with their students. The phonemic awareness baseline assessment, that PABA that Kristen mentioned. That was administered in the fall for grade one and then in the winter as a benchmark. And when looking at these subtests based on a lot of that implementation of the Hagerty program, we've really seen some huge gains. In the fall, fifty-nine percent of our students were meeting expectations for blending phonemes. And in the winter, ninety-eight percent scored in meeting expectations. And then a second component of this test, I won't tell you all about the test, but it's isolating final sounds. And in fall, sixty-seven percent of our students were meeting expectations. And then in the winter, when they took it, eighty-two percent of students scored as meeting expectations. So we're definitely seeing some great gains and we continue to implement this program with first grade and move into second grade with that. I've definitely had the opportunity to see this program in place in first grade, both virtually and in person. It has some awesome catchy phrases for our first graders where you're just working on, on doing a lot of hand motions like roller coasters and. Isolating sounds and the kids really get into it. So I'm proud of the implementation of this and, and how much the students have been able to. Not only add letters to words, but takeaway letters, look at digraphs and blending and really improve with their phonemic awareness. And moving along to math. Again, like Kristen and Cara showed earlier, after analyzing our data in grades three through five, that our focus has been on math. We noticed from our map scores from the winter of twenty twenty to winter twenty twenty-one. The students struggled in the two domains of measurement and data and then geometry. In third grade, in the domain of measurement and data, six students scored in that low average range in twenty twenty. And then in twenty twenty-one, we noticed that that increases seventeen students scoring in that low average range. And then in fourth grade, we had fifteen students score high in that measurement and data in twenty twenty. And then that number did decrease in twenty twenty-one. And then for fifth grade, we saw that in twenty twenty in measurement and data, fourteen students scored in the high range. And in twenty twenty-one, that decreased to eight students in the high range. So again, for fifth grade and geometry, in twenty twenty, we had twenty-three students score high average. And then that number decreased to eleven students scoring in that high average range. So we've done a lot of collaboration in grades three through five and the teachers have developed some action steps to address these domains. So I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Amison, one of our fourth grade teachers. Thank you Nikki for being here tonight to talk about some of these action steps to address our math needs.
Hi, everybody, thank you, hi, I'm Nikki Amison, I teach fourth grade at Atkinson. Grades three through five at Atkinson have started doing some vertical collaboration. Meaning that we're working with the grade levels above and below us to really focus on the gaps in learning. That occurred last year in the spring when school closed. So the first thing we did was we identified the priority areas that Erin was talking about. And for us at Atkinson, that's fractions, measurement and data and geometry. So those are the three target areas that we're going to work with. One of the things that we're doing is collaborating with the grade level before us to kind of bring in some of the topics that the kids missed in the spring. So for example, when I start my 4th grade fractions unit in a little bit, I'm going to first do a week-long, maybe two-week-long, 3rd grade fraction unit before I even start my 4th grade fraction unit to kind of bring them up to speed on the skills they may have missed in the spring. The other thing we're doing is we're inserting math into our daily routine a lot more. We're putting it in morning meeting, morning work, obviously. We've all got problem-solving notebooks. We're doing a lot of math challenges and math games, just trying to get math basically anywhere in the day that we can. And then the last thing we're doing, one really concrete example for 4th grade, is that our geometry unit is incredibly vocabulary-heavy, obviously, but it also is really tied to our measurement and data strands because the 4th grade measurement and data is a lot about geometric measurement. So the reason that both of those scores dipped, our measurement and data and geometry scores, is because they're so closely tied. So to help our students with the vocabulary of that difficult geometry unit, we've kind of built this parallel vocabulary program that goes with the geometry unit. So the kids make dictionaries, and they fill it with all those, we call them geometerns, and they draw pictures, and they do like these hands-on learning activities with all of those geometry vocab words. And then each week, we give them like 10 geometry words to study, and then at the end of the week, we do a little vocab slash geometry terms quiz. It's something we've had a lot of success with in the past, so we're really excited about implementing that this year. We think it's going to give them a really, really solid foundation for when they're ready to move on to 5th grade. They'll have all the knowledge they need in that subject area. So yeah, vertical collaboration, it's going great. We're going to get them where they need to go. Thanks, Erin.
Thanks, Nikki. And I'm going to pass it over to Kittredge School and Mr. Cushing.
I'm going to pause for a minute. First of all, I just, I really want to appreciate how many of you are here, how much you've obviously put into this presentation, how much you've obviously put into your day-to-day classes, how much you've put into your individual students. It is a tremendous amount of information you're sharing with us. And so I would love to sit and listen to you all night long, but I feel like we need to check in with our members and see what we need to do from here. We've got quite a bit on our agenda tonight, and there's, as you know, tremendous pressure on all of us for all the work that we're doing. Tremendous pressure on you day-to-day, and you know, tremendous pressure on families as they're managing an unprecedented time, as we've said so many times. So I want to just pause and check back in with our members and see where we want to go from here. Is that all right? Can I give some thumbs up or smile? You folks on TV can't see the people that are with me, but they're looking very, very sad. So they're all looking very sad.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
This is David. I do, I echo your sentiments. It's been very informative. I just kind of, and I want to hear especially from Mr. Cushing and especially Mrs. Horton because my sons are in class. But I do know there's probably a bunch of parents watching tonight that want to hear a little bit more about our continued discussion. So if we could, I would just maybe recommend, maybe we just kind of move to old business real quickly for like maybe 15 minutes, then come back to this, if that's okay. That'd be my recommendation at least, so people could hear.
Yeah, let's check in and hear what the others on the committee want to say, and I hate to ask these educators to stay any longer tonight. I do feel like there was a lot of pressure to get them here and get this information. We've been looking for this information, and it's just the fact that a lot changed in the last week that was not necessarily within any of our individual decision-making, that just a lot's been happening and going on. So, Ms. Lynch, I just want to check with you and see, are you okay if we pause this here, or do you feel like you have burning questions that you need to get back to? Should we move on to? Just checking in, how are you doing?
I'm okay with pausing and coming back to it.
Okay. And Mr. McDevitt?
I'll be honest, I'm really struggling with the presentation tonight. You know, I appreciate all of the staff that are here, but this is not the level of detail that I was anticipating, and this is very inconsistent, school to school, grade to grade. So, I mean, I have some very pointed questions, but I don't think we're going to get to those answers tonight, so.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Mabley?
This is awkward. I don't like that we're doing this necessarily, but I guess what we really probably need to know, especially to move on to the next thing, is, and we're getting it, but you know, how far behind are we? Are we feeling, it sounds like in some cases, things are going really well, and we're going to be able to close the gaps and get people ready for next year, and other things, we're still working toward that. I think that's the level of detail that we probably need, rather than, you know, as granular as some of this is.
Yeah, and for myself, I'm feeling like the three big questions I have are, where are the gaps? What are the needs? And what resources do the schools need from the school committee? What do we need to be aware of so we can plan our separately budgeted funding and where we need to go from there? So, it may be that we want to stop the presentation where we are for tonight, Ms. Marks, and and come back to some of those bigger picture questions later.
That's certainly your prerogative.
I don't want anyone to feel that this presentation is not appreciated, or the work that everybody's doing is unappreciated or underappreciated. And I do know that, you know, like Mr. Tracy said, there's a great desire for many people to hear more. I just feel like the precedents that are in front of us for our old business have to take precedent at this time. So I think the most respectful thing would be to invite you to stay or invite you to end the presentation now. If you choose to stay, we can certainly come back to it after we do some of our old business work.
At this point, I really, I do appreciate all the teachers being here. They have very busy schedules. I really am not comfortable asking them to stay. I think there's going to be questions, likely be questions about the update information we're going to present. So I personally would be more comfortable rescheduling the rest of the presentation for another time, and then maybe if there are some more direct types of questions or information that people are looking for, we can add that in the next time we present.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you all very, very much for coming. I really do appreciate all the work that you're doing ongoingly, and I hope you rest easy tonight and that you enjoy your day with your students tomorrow.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
So I'm going to go back to Dr. Gilligan and see if we can finish the superintendent's report.
You know, there's a lot of information there. We knew that this was going to be a big one to get information out tonight, but that would be it with the superintendent's report under that. And I appreciate all of the teachers that came out tonight to report, and the principals, and the implications for this. There's quite a bit there, and that ends the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Gilligan. Just a couple of things on the chair's report. I just want to appreciate the Read Across America event that took place yesterday and earlier this week at, you know, all the schools across the district. I know a number of my colleagues participated in that. I just wanted to report out that at our last meeting, we did say that we were going to send a letter to DESI and the Board of Ed, asking for updates on the Performing Arts Guidance. And as you know, our letter was wildly successful, and they have updated that guidance. Thanks to Ms. Mabley's penmanship.
She wrote it like a mom. It was scolding.
The BRC met yesterday, and we're embracing the catchphrase, "Plant seeds of positivity." That's going to be our focus for the spring season, and we're inviting people across North Andover to think about how the work that they're doing in their different organizations can use that theme, "Plant seeds of positivity." As you all know, that we're coming up on the anniversary of our shutdown last year, so we've learned a great deal. So like, one example is to ask the question, what's something that you've learned? What's a skill that you've gained? What's something you've been able to benefit from during this unexpected time? We've already had a couple of groups that have offered to jump in with "Plant seeds of positivity." The Interact Club, which is still selling their trees and very anxious to meet their goal, can see a place where "Plant seeds of positivity" can be part of that, as well as please be on the lookout from the poet laureate and the library to share an upcoming activity that will also embrace that theme. So, Ms. Mabley, do you want to just say a couple of words about the Hall of Fame nominations?
Sure. We've started to get some information in on a couple of Hall of Fame nominations. We need a little bit more work around that, and we'd love to see even more. So if you go to the website on the school committee, you can access the Way to Honor Educators Who Have Retired, who've done a great service to our community here in North Andover, to our school system, and nominate them to be Education Hall of Fame recipients in this year. And the deadline for those applications is April 30th, and after that, we'll put together a review committee.
Terrific. Thank you very much. And one last thing for the committee, we generally do the superintendent's mid-cycle review, which is really just the superintendent giving us a report of his progress on the goals that we set for the year. We usually do that at the end of February. Obviously, there's been a lot going on, so I anticipate that information is going to come up at a future meeting, probably the 18th of May, excuse me, March. Skip right over April. So we're on to Old Business, which is our continued discussion and update on spring increased in-person learning opportunities, and that issue, Dr. Gilligan.
Okay. I think I'd like to, again, thank the teachers for coming out, and if the principals at this time, I know they're busy too as well, they're happy to stay around, and I know we're going to have them back, obviously, but we're happy to do this as well. So I appreciate all their efforts and hard work, because really, it is a lot of work. It is a lot to know what kids that know are unable to do and where they need to go, and it really is going to inform our, you know, Acceleration Academy's summer work and fall work. So, thank you to the principals. Okay, so, update, there you go, Dr. Mealy. Update on increase in learning, so K to 12. So tomorrow, Commissioner O'Reilly, the Commissioner of Education here in Massachusetts, he is going to have his board vote to, as a regulation, to change structured learning time and what counts. And basically, K through 5 is going to eliminate the hybrid model. So we sent out a survey this week. We're going to get to the survey results in a second, and Jim will get to talk a little more. Sorry, Jim, I do that a lot. I try to get a lot of information in, you know. So at the end of the day is this, we want our kids in, we want to do it safely, we want them back, and K to 5 would be April 5th. And there's a lot of work to do, and this really informs a lot of our pieces to it. And also, we have on our timeline for the middle school and high school, come back with plans so that we can bring them back and return and bring them in safely and do so. So, Dr. Mealy, the survey.
So as most people know, we sent out surveys by level, first K to 5, and then 6 to 8, 9 to 12 went out last night. The response has been tremendous, again, not surprisingly. What I'm sharing here, and I have some additional information to share as well, is the main question of people feeling comfortable, or do they think they'll send their child for full day, if we move to full day, or when we move to full day, or will they choose OLA? And you can see at the K to 5 level, it's 90.6% would choose the full day option over OLA. At the middle school, it's 86.4%, and at the high school, it's 88.4%. And I summarized, and again, we're pretty close to all of our elementary parents responding. It just went out last night, so we probably have about half of our middle school and high school so far, so we're continuing to compile that information. But it's very consistent across the levels. As you can see, well, kindergarten, we asked if parents would want to stay in the current model or move to full day, and it was 82.5% would want to move to full day. We just talked about the OLA versus full day for elementary. We also asked a question, trying to get a sense of what items might, people might be more concerned about with regards to vaccine or eating lunch at school. We asked if people would be comfortable sending their children, whether or not staff were vaccinated. And you can see pretty consistently, most people would feel comfortable still sending their children, even if staff are not yet vaccinated. And as you know, we're working hard to make that happen anyway, but it was 79.4% K to 5, 75.1, 6 to 8, and 75.7, 9 to 12. And that, they felt more strongly about the vaccine than they did about eating at lunch. You can see, K to 5, 92.6% whether or not they're eating, and 6 to 8 grade would be 92.2%. Around riding the bus, as that has changed as well, that buses are now, per the guidance, allowed to run at full capacity. They still will run with their windows open, obviously encouraging the flow of air. But we asked if people would be using the bus, and what we broke it down by is those who are eligible to take the bus, will they use it or will they not? And so of the eligible riders, 41.1% will not be riding K to 5, and 46.1% would not be riding from 6 to 8. And then the pool testing was the last one I summarized. We do have some more information. Mr. McDevitt was talking earlier about, we want to try to, it's difficult in a survey to try to get as much information as possible without looking like you're trying to sway the answer one way or the other. But we do want to educate people on the benefits of and the work that goes into pool testing. So before we make the final decision, we'll be asking that question again when we can get you more information. But for right now, the way it was posed, we have about a third of those, it's about a two-to-one ratio, in favor of participating in pooled testing.
Just quickly, the elementary surveys were almost complete, based on numbers that we expected to kind of get back, we're a pretty high percentage.
Absolutely, yeah. We had to scrub a little bit for repeats because it were a sum, but it was over 90% participation.
And then the middle and high school, did it go out last night? It went out last night, right? Okay.
And we're already over 500 in both.
Wow, okay, great.
Yep.
Just as a note, sometimes it goes to your promotions folder. So if parents didn't get the survey, check your junk folder or your promotions.
Good point.
That's what mine was.
Thank you. We also talked about this, I won't spend a lot of time on it. What we're trying to do, as Brian was saying, there's different avenues for getting the vaccine. Now that it's been made, a prioritization to get our educators vaccinated, the individuals are making their efforts, whether they're trying to get appointments, and they're trying all the different strategies. And we've been trying to send out, because people have had success trying something, and so we've shared that out to the staff, that you might want to try this. So we've been trying to get them as much information as possible of ways they might be able to do it themselves. And as Brian said, we're also trying to partner, you know, establish some distribution sites, get somebody to come in that we can do it ourselves. Whatever it takes to get it done, we're going to make that effort. Regarding union negotiations, it was interesting, there were some themes, the other part of the surveys that we required, or not. that we, we required, or not required, we asked and gave people the opportunity to comment, um, let us know what their concerns might be, ask us questions. Um, and there were a lot of themes there. You know, we, we had people, uh, telling us passionately that they needed to be back in and we had people telling us passionately that it's too soon and, you know, you, you have them on both ends, um, in the comments section. And one that I thought was funny was I, I had a few comments asking if we were reading the comments and yes, we are reading the comments. And then there were specific, you know, comments or questions around the vaccine and transportation and eating lunch and we'll address all of those. By, by next week, we will definitely wanna get out, um, what the questions were and, and our answers to those questions. So we'll make those available as well. But one of the things that, that came up a lot was, um, this idea that we're not getting back or we're not back yet because of the union. And I have to tell you that nothing could be further from the truth. You know, we, we spent, we saw it tonight in the presentation, the passion and the dedication our teachers have. And then we saw it over the summer. We would not have had as much in, in-person learning as we have to date if it wasn't for the efforts of our staff and, and our union leadership. Um, and so, and then just as another example of that happened yesterday, Dr. Gilligan and I, uh, spent the day with, uh, the teachers, union leaders at all of our elementary schools, at all of the spaces in those, um, schools, measuring and coming up with solutions. And the theme of the day was, it wasn't, huh, why can't we do this? It was, how do we make this possible? So it was really encouraging for us. And Dr. Gilligan, do you wanna speak to that as well?
Yeah, I mean, it was just a, a can-do attitude. I, I think that, um, you know, the commissioner, you know, whether he was gonna come up with a mandate or not, and that came, you know, really out of the blue, uh, for a lot of folks. You know, this was the work we were doing and working to plan to bring kids back to begin with. And, um, you know, having that can-do attitude is really important, uh, especially when, you know, when we bring kids back and the spaces we have, it would be, you know, less than six feet, you know, it'd be three feet, but it'd be less than six feet. Um, so, um, thinking about all those solutions and those possibilities, um, you know, there are things we've always been working on, but it's also, there'll be some new challenges too. And I think that, uh, the input of the folks that are doing it every day is very valuable, so.
Yeah, and that's the, the bullet round problem solving. That's the attitude it was. It was, how do we figure this out? How do we make this happen? Uh, so we're, we are lucky here in North Andover. Um, and then, once that happens and we figure out what it's going to look like, uh, then we'll have to talk about, does this have any impact on working conditions? And we would, that would be what we would have to negotiate and put in an MOA if there is any, uh, are any changes, um, that we have to, to work out. And then I think Lorraine Marks is going to talk to the next few slides.
So for our students in, um, K through five, just for parents to consider as they make the decision, which we'll be asking for in the next week, whether they will come, um, continue in full person, return to full in person, or will choose the Ola option, which we, we, um, will continue to offer. These are the mitigation strategies. It will continue. Students are going to be three feet apart, most likely. When possible, the distance may be greater. So that's gonna depend on, you know, each school classrooms are a different size. The number of students in any particular classroom may vary, but, um, more of our students are likely to be three feet apart than six feet apart, um, in the classrooms. Given the current guidance, lunch will remain at a distance of six feet. And I think that's important for parents to know. I think that's a concern that everybody has. Um, you know, students will be unmasked while they're eating. Um, you know, we talk about the particles, um, Cheryl was talking about it today at our DPH meeting. So I think it's important for parents to know that we will, um, continue to have students at a distance of six feet. Students will still wear masks at all times. That's not going to change. Mask breaks will be provided and students will continue to have designated times for hand washing. In terms of quarantine and isolation, if a student tests COVID positive in a classroom, close contacts will be notified in quarantine. So again, those are students within six feet of the student who tests positive. In addition, the entire class may remain at home for schooling for the quarantine time, which is currently 10 days. In this case, the teacher would teach the class remotely during this period of time. We did talk about this today. There may be some, some fluctuations in this, but we want to be upfront and transparent and let parents know that that might be what has to happen in order for the teacher to be able to reach the number of students in the classroom. New transportation guidelines have been issued and they allow more students to be on the buses. Students will now be assigned seats on the bus so that close contacts can be identified should a student test positive. Again, it would be only those students within six feet on the bus. And that's not necessarily gonna impact those students because obviously those students aren't all in one class. It's not gonna impact, um, those classrooms. Close contacts on the bus will need to be quarantined and we will continue to transport only those students who are, we, we are legally required to. So that means students in grades K through six and students who live more than two miles from the schools. Teacher class assignments, this is another big decision factor. It is not possible to guarantee that a child will have the same teacher they have had, especially in cases where the teacher taught one cohort in the hybrid model and another cohort in Ola. Once we know who will be in-person learning and who will be in Ola learning, we will be able to be, um, begin to reconfigure those classes. As much as possible, we will keep current students with their current teachers. I do wanna add here that this isn't necessarily a new thing for some of our students who switched out of Ola and went into the hybrid, uh, model. They had a different teacher. So this, this has actually been occurring. But is, is it looks like we're gonna have more students who want to be in-person, which we're thrilled about. We may not need as many of the Ola teachers. Some of those classes will not be, um, needed anymore. Teachers may need to be reconfigured. We have to look at our specialist schedule. So there's a lot of work that goes into this once we know, um, what parents are choosing for their, for their children. We will continue to run Ola through the end of the year. However, again, it could, this, these changes could impact Ola teachers and classes as well. Next steps, um, K through five, principals will be sending out a document, um, hopefully tomorrow, due next Friday, which will ask if you plan to send your children or your child to full person or to Ola. Once that data is gathered and schools can organize classes, teachers and spaces, the principals will then provide you more specific details. What lunch looks like at Franklin may be different than what lunch looks like at Kittredge. So those types of things, um, will be specific from the principal. And then an approval of an in-person plan by the school committee will be determined. Grade six through eight and nine through 12, principals are continuing to develop plans for increased in-person learning for middle and high school. We are collecting the survey, survey data and we will do a presentation on the March 18th school committee meeting with more information on how that will move forward.
Right. So it's been full steam ahead. I think the, um, you know, particularly with the, the, with the commissioner tomorrow, that's gonna be a regulation change, not a recommendation, K to five. And, um, you know, they will have other guidance that they said will be out about middle school and high school. But, um, we're looking ahead and we're looking at that data and that work, um, as well for those levels. Those are, you know, our goal is, there is no, to get everyone back, there is no substitution for in-person learning and we are all, um, doing everything we can to make that happen.
Okay. So we'll have our go around, um, and see if there are questions, um, from the committee. Ms. Lynch.
Could you just describe a little bit more, uh, Dr. Mealy, about your walkthrough yesterday and some of the creative ideas that you, uh, guys are all coming up with?
Sure. So, you know, the main focus was on, um, understanding how many students, uh, would be expected in each classroom and, and making sure that we could, um, get them in, um, at three feet. And in very few cases, um, that was the case, that we, we felt we could. And we also identified some possible other areas in each school that if we needed a larger classroom to keep that classroom together, we could use that space instead of the, uh, classroom that it's in. Ideally, uh, understanding how teachers and students feel about their classroom. Uh, we obviously wanna try to, to maintain the, the classroom as much as possible. Uh, but also, you know, one of the big things is how do we manage lunch at the elementary level? And one of the things we talked about is that students have to be 12, uh, six feet apart, uh, when they take their mask off and they're eating. So that means you might be able to have 18, 19 or 20 students in the class for teaching at three feet, but for eating, only 12 of them might be able to be in that room. So that means six to eight of them might have to go somewhere else for lunch, but where are they gonna go? So we identified in, in the schools, the larger areas like the gym or the cafeteria. Um, and, uh, they, every student at the beginning of the year got a yoga mat, so they could take their yoga mat. And one of the things that we came up with yesterday is a possibility of, of those, those plastic trays that look sort of like, uh, a breakfast in bed tray that they could have with them, um, put their lunch on and, and eat their lunch and then stack them and we can disinfect them in between use and they can go back to their class. Uh, so things like that are the kind of things that we talked about during the course of the day yesterday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. Mr. Terese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so first of all, thank you, Jim and Greg. Um, just some exciting news. Very happy that we're making progress. It's like every week, better news comes down the pike. Obviously, a lot of changes have happened since last week, so I'm glad we're addressing them. I just think it, you know, it just reminds the public that, you know, we're dealing with constant changes and you guys are adapting on the fly. And I also wanna, you know, s- uh, give my thanks to, uh, to Lisa and Ryan, uh, our union presidents for, you know, being cooperative and, and trying to find solutions to these problems, um, or these issues, I should say. So that's, uh, that's exciting. I guess I have one, one quick question, one specific question, if you don't have the answer for it, but on one of Lorraine's slides, um, talking about quarantine in a classroom and the close contact issue. I guess, and maybe this is the question for Lorraine or maybe it's for Cheryl. I think Cheryl's there too. Who, who are we defining who a close contact is, especially when it comes to these classrooms that are, you know, the kids are interacting at three feet? Is it, is it safe to say that, like, everyone in that one class would be considered a close contact or do we don't have that? If we don't have an answer, we don't have an answer right now, but I think most parents are gonna wanna know, like, Jesus, I mean, uh, uh, there's a possibility that my kid's gonna be for 10 days and it's something people need to think about before they answer the question.
So certainly, this is something Brian, Cheryl and I have, uh, and Jim and Lorraine have talked quite a bit about, uh, because, you know, we are looking forward to the more guidance tomorrow from the commissioner, but it is a challenging one. Um, and, you know, I'll let, um, Cheryl talk about, uh, contact tracing. But the most important thing we do is, A, um, make sure we keep the kids safe and have the appropriate distance for quarantining and then B, also the continuity of instruction. So how does it, you know, impact the class as in its entirety? And that's why we said it may. Um, so Cheryl?
So there's two things there. Um, there's a difference between quarantining or, or having the whole class go remote. So the students that are within six feet, they would be required to quarantine. So the students in front, behind or next to them, because we do have seating plans, we've had that since the beginning of the year. Uh, what we talked about today was, it could be up to eight people because if the desks are that close, it's the people diagonal as well. So it could be eight people having to be in quarantine. So that would be eight students out of the classroom. What we talked about today and what some other schools are doing is they're having the class go remote so that everybody can still be together and, and, you know, the teacher can teach the class together, but the rest of the students, because they're remote, they're not necessarily in quarantine. So they could still go to their practice or, uh, groceries or out with family. They wouldn't have to quarantine, but the classroom would be remote and it would be, um, for the 10 days so that everybody could go back together.
It's, it's been a, a long time since I've used Pythagorean theorem, but with, with students three feet apart, the diagonals are less than six feet and that's why it's eight instead of the four.
And that's, uh, Cheryl, that's the, the guidance today on, on March 4th. When we go back in a month, the guidance easily could be different. I think it's, it's important for everybody to just be willing to understand that there, there could be changes. Correct?
Thanks for that clarification. I, I usually start every sentence with, "as of today." Thank you.
As of 3:00 PM. Uh, and, yeah, I gotta say, also throwing in Brian, Brian has been really thoughtful about the, the lunch piece, right? So eliminating hybrid, back to Jim's point, um, and having all-in or completely remote, like, we have to get really creative around, uh, lunch, all these different areas. But, uh, this is also something that could change and be a challenge, so.
Well, it's gotta, it's gotta take a lot of effort, a lot of patience on everyone's part. And I just, again, wanna really my thanks to, uh, all, all of you and your, your team for getting us this far and getting ready to probably change plans again next week. But, uh, good work, guys. Thank you.
Mr. McDevitt.
Couple of thoughts. One, obviously very excited to start to, uh, uh, see the calendar moving closer and closer to April 5th and, and having students K to five return to school. Couple of questions, I, I think Holly and David have already asked a, a few that I had, but, um, what additional staffing needs do we need to accommodate this? You know, if we've got students who perhaps are, um, gonna go into a gym for, uh, a lunch, um, or, you know, even outside, you know, do we need additional, uh, substitutes or lunch aids or, um, just parent volunteers to help with this? I, I know a number of people have, uh, said, you know, I, I can't help out a ton, but I, I'd go in for an hour if I could, if, if that's allowed. And I'm not sure what, what the rules on some of that might be. So that's my first question.
Yeah, actually, a great, it's a great question because, one, we're anticipating, we're gonna post anticipating, not waiting until we, we determine. We'll post positions, but at the same time, a great point would be to ask those who are willing to volunteer to have your Cory checks done and have that out of the way so that there's no delay. If you are willing to and you have your Cory checks done, then we'll be able to utilize you for more, whatever it might need. But, um, we're, we're gonna post anticipating and then as our principals work with their teams at each building and start to operationalize this, we'll have a sense of what we need and then we can let people know.
And it really will come down to the folks who, you know, with the hybrid eliminated, what the, how that balances out and then, you know, some of the folks who may be, uh, Ola, you know, that's where we may have to bring them into a different space, um, particularly for the kids who are coming back, who may have been Ola and are coming back in.
Okay. Um, I saw in the survey, I, I believe I saw the draft, um, I, I didn't look when I got it, um, uh, I guess on Monday. Uh, are we still doing before and after-school activities, Breakfast Club? And, um, I wanna say the after-school, Kid Stop, thank you. I forgot, I blanked on the name. Uh, so both of those would, would still be there, uh, traditional hours, um, space limitations, the parents, will there be like an extra sign-up and how, how does that work? I know that's a concern for a number of families.
So not necessarily. I, Rick, I, I said it a thousand times, but Calat does an unbelievable job. And that, the reason that that question was there was for him so he can plan. The space limitations will be on how many students we can have in any particular space. And then we would have to have multiple spaces, which mean you need more staff, um, because you have to have at least one per space.
Right.
So that's what he'll have to figure out and, and that's why the survey question was there.
I think one of the things that's in our favor that no one has mentioned is, like, this week it's been 40 a couple days. And it's also been very cold a few, but the weather is improving and we're gonna hopefully have, uh, more outdoor opportunities for snack, lunch break, those kinds of things.
Okay. And then I, I guess my last question in terms of the, um, uh, not quarantine, um, but, you know, if we have that one student who tests positive, right, and, and we've got, let's say, a class of 18 and, and as luck would have it, you know, he or she happens to sit in the dead center of the class. Right now, we've got to quarantine eight students that are there, you know, there's nine other students that are in that class, right? And so they are now not coming to school for 10 days. Does it make sense to have those students still continue to go to school? Cause now they would be at, you know, conceivably, I don't know if it directly equals six feet, but maybe it's five. And have those other students remotely kind of, uh, connecting into that. If they're already gonna be remote, can we do that?
I think there's gonna be, be a couple of ways to look at it and there's certainly, that's, that could be one of the solutions to an issue like that. And I think it'd also depend on, you know, was the teacher a close contact or was the, um, you know, or a staff member, um, that, you know, may be in the classroom or work more closely with someone in special education. Um, so that's really, really important and that's, those are a couple of challenges. You know, the guidance as of right now, um, again, I think Cheryl said it best. I think a lot of districts have quarantined the, the entire classroom. Um, but we're looking at the way to keep kids in school, just like we have.
Remote it the entire classroom, not quarantine the ones that are close contacts and remote the ones that are not.
Thank you for, that's an important word, yeah.
I, I can't think of anything that would be, um, I mean, I think the whole year has been tough on kids, right? But if we get them back into school and now one kid, and then we've gotta pull them all back out for two weeks. Meanwhile, their brother or their sister may be going in, you know, they're in- you know, they're in second grade, their brother's sister's going in third, fourth, fifth, whatever. I just, you know, if we can be really creative with that, I think, you know, and maybe some of those parents say, you know what, I want my kid to be home, but there may be six who say, you know what, I'm comfortable with them going back in. I think we need to look at what that could look like.
And I think that goes back to what Jim was saying about, you know, working with the union leadership the other day, being solution focused. You know, I'm really happy, because it's going to be great to get kids back, and we're looking forward to it. There are some challenges, but we will, we will make it work.
Yeah, I just think the more time that we can get them in.
May I piggyback on Andrew's question for one second and ask Brian or Cheryl, if the teacher is vaccinated, is he or she a close contact that is required to quarantine?
That's another, as of today, yes. But that could change. We have another meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00, and they're supposed to give us a little bit more guidance on parameters when some people are vaccinated.
And could that be one dose, two dose? Could change tomorrow?
Right now, both doses, still, everybody has to follow the travel guidance and quarantine.
We'll let you know on April 4th. All right.
Let you know on April 5th at 7:00 AM.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. McDevitt, you're set?
I'm all set, Mrs. Mealy, yep.
Okay, Ms. Mealy?
Yeah, so I guess the key thing is I'm thrilled to hear that you've been able to work together to pull off everybody eating at six feet, because I was going to ask Brian and Cheryl if there was any circumstance under which you would be comfortable with or recommend eating under six feet.
Not at this time, no.
Thank you.
Nope.
Good answer, Brian. I love that.
No, thank you. I think that was really, really important. So that, to me, the only, the biggest challenge was that and this whole, how do you run a classroom when half are in person, what Mr. McDevitt just brought up? Those are the two things that make me the most concerned, because I hate the idea of, change is super, super difficult anyway, and then to change and then have that turn around, you know, four days later, is, would be hideous for absolutely everyone involved. And so, but I think we have to all recognize that those things are very, very possible. So everybody needs to be flexible about that.
Right, guidance changes quite a bit, but we're, you know, we're going to have that can-do attitude, and again, I think we're already way out in front, particularly around lunch. I know the DESC said they'll have elementary lunch guidance out in a couple of weeks, or maybe a week and a half, two weeks, and these are the things that we're already at, so.
Yeah, I think these K through five, they should all do intermittent fasting between the hours of eight and three, and not worry about this. Is that okay, Cheryl?
No. We're going to send all the eight-year-olds to you, Mr. Teresi, I'm hungry.
Yeah, my kids would love that.
So I have just a couple of comments, really. One is just, again, tremendous appreciation for the work that you all are doing, day and night, and, you know, working with each other, working with so many community partners, working with families. I'm really, I'm really impressed and I'm really thankful. I would raise a concern about bringing in parent volunteers, especially if we're able to get staff vaccinated. I wouldn't want, you know, we talked about this over the summer, and we have limited, you know, visitors and volunteers in school, because we don't want to expose students to additional sources of violence, virus, and we don't want to expose our staff to additional sources of virus. So yes, go ahead and get your Cory. I mean, things seem to be changing every day, but I would soft pedal and look to use the most consistent folks that we can, and that might be volunteers, but I'm just expressing a concern about that. I know we have surveyed a great number of people, you know, parents all over the place. I do know that we had some requests from high school students that they have a survey, and as we go forward, I know we just briefly touched on talking more about high school and middle school, so I would ask that, that we consider sending out a survey to high school students, because we might learn some things about how we can be successful with that group. And I'm just looking to see if I had anything else. I mean, I have a lot of other things, but I think that that's probably enough for now. Okay, so is there anything else on old business we need to cover?
Can I just ask one more question? You kind of reminded me of it that I meant to ask actually last week, which was, you know, all of us are on listservs, and we read the paper, we read various things about, there's a huge challenge in finding substitute teachers, finding short-term subs, long-term subs, full-time teachers across the state, across the valley, across North Andover. So I was glad to hear that you're going to be posting all that now, but it sounds like the Plan B would be volunteers, but I'm wondering what the Plan B is. I know that this has been a problem.
When we talk about creative solution, you know, we are going to obviously take our guidance from Brian and Cheryl, and what's the safest and healthiest thing to do, but we're going to be, try to be creative as possible and make it work. And, you know, I would just say that, you know, kids are going to come back in elementary, and we're, we're looking to plan to bring back secondary, and we are going to have to make it work. And if you think about, I just think about the can-do attitude of this community. I think about when Ann Bradstreet opened up, and it was probably my, I don't know, I hadn't been on the job very long, and there was a lot of site work to be done up there. Well, you know, we all chipped in here from central office, we had folks, and we figured it out, you know, and that's what we're going to have to do. And as of-
But it's a challenge, I guess we're trying to get it, that is not a layup. This is going to be a challenge.
Right, and in all honesty, it's why I jumped at Mr. McDevitt's idea, is that I'm anticipating it will be difficult, and of course, we'll be, you know, we'll maintain the safety protocols with whoever we bring into our buildings, but it's why I wanted to get the word out there, that if you are willing to, and it ends up being what we need to use, we want to have it ready to go.
Well, and I would encourage parents that are interested in being in our schools to apply for the open positions, right? We'll need new attendants, we'll need TAs, we'll need bodies.
And we'll continue to meet with the board, with the public health director like we normally do, and Cheryl, and take that, that advice, and I'm sure things will continue to change. But it was, you know, exciting news about the vaccinations for teachers. I think that, you know, I think the governor announced it down in Gloucester, and I think, I think it may have been the mayor or the superintendent, one of them was like, you know, had a big cheer, and I think he turned around, so pretty exciting.
I wonder if this committee wants to ask any more questions or have any more deliberations around pooled testing as one of our options? Hearing none, we'll move along.
Wait, wait a second.
I was just saying, I don't right now, but I do, I do want to see, I'm just curious if it's going to be, continue to be in the survey as well. Okay.
Yes.
So I do have a comment to just put out there, which is, was alluded to, that's a lot of work to prepare for it, and it's a lot of work to administer, so now we're getting kids in full-time. I would be interested to know what you would anticipate. Would it take 20 minutes at the start of every single day to do that? And, and I respect Brian, that you said that any data is good data and helpful, but if the numbers are already so low, and now you're going to take an extra 20 minutes to do all this kind of stuff, is that, is it worth it? I guess is what my question, not even the money, I'm talking about time, I'm worried about time. So that's the question that's been running through my head, I just thought I would share.
And just to pull the curtain back a little bit, that's the kind of conversation we've been having, in that our numbers are so low that, you know, of the mitigation factors, pooled testing is down, I think Cheryl listed it as the eighth, you know, mitigation factor. And so is it worth all the effort that you have to go through in the training of everyone to participate, to get what might be a minimal, minimal result? And we even talked about the possibility of doing it for a couple of weeks, and if we're not getting any results, then-
Stop.
-we don't need to do it anymore.
Okay.
Something like that.
So I just wanted to raise that, as that's something that's been running through my head, is I'm not totally clear on the value add, and given the circumstances that we have eight kids, four of whom are OLA right now.
Right.
But I think in part, that's because the parents in our community have been really good about-
That's right.
Absolutely, which is a more important mitigating factor.
I can't thank him enough.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe we may have an exposure, we pull our kids-
That's right.
Right? And, and there's no, I mean, yes, there's work that the kids have to make up and things of that, but, you know, the teachers are working with the students, you know, because of that, right? You know, there's no credit reduction, I know specifically at the high school, you know, things of that nature. So I think people are, you know, less likely, like we all are, right? You know, less likely to go to work if we're maybe just, maybe got a cough, right? Like, no, we're keeping them home, so.
Well, and I think this level of uncertainty with having eight close contacts for any positive case, or up to eight close contacts for any positive case, in addition to, you know, bus and recess or whatever else we might have that would be less than six feet, I think that was one of the things that we took into consideration when we were looking at starting the school year and maintaining a six-foot. You know, we've done that successfully, and we can build on that success. So I'm very hopeful for this model.
And to Andrew's point, a lot of that success is parents realizing those signs, and I can't say enough about the nursing staff and like educating parents and having a hotline, and Cheryl's positioned us for all sorts of, you know, whatever we need to do, she's worked at the public health to position us to be successful and do. And, but the families have made it work, the staff has made it work, and Cheryl's nurses and all the work they've done, and not only mitigation, but all the contact tracing, the weekends, the nights, they've kept kids safe, and it's been amazing.
And we're not ready for a vote on this, because there's no regulations yet, and we still have some negotiation work to do, but it seems like we're moving forward at the appropriate pace to be able to hit the ground on April 5th. We have no new, no new business, and so our only other agenda item is to adjourn, and we usually have an opportunity to go around and hear if there's anybody who wants to report something or share something with the community, so we'll do that, and I'll start with Ms. Lynch.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Teresi?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. McDevitt?
So it's not necessarily something to announce, but I really want to go back for a minute to the elementary data overview that we spent a significant amount of time on tonight. You know, I think we really need to acknowledge the amount of time and work to put this together for our teachers to be here and our principals to be here as well. I'm excited to see us go back on April 5th and have that in-person learning, but I struggle with what's here for a whole list of reasons, and I'd like to just take a quick minute if I can. So I know I specifically have been asking for this data since December. The first time I saw it was when I walked into the room at 6:00 PM today, and then we've now pulled in, I don't know, at least 10, if not more, staff to speak to it. It's inconsistent across grades. Each school is inconsistent with the data that they're reporting. You know, it's, I'm going to pick this piece of data here that makes things look one way or another, and then describe what we're doing about it. You know, we're not looking at what second-grade students last year are doing in third grade, we're comparing fall of, or winter of 2019 to winter of 2020, but no correlation to, you know, that's at a grade level, that's not there. And I'm sure the data's there, but that's not what was presented tonight. So what it doesn't show me, and then we grouped, you know, grades three, four, five together, which, you know, paints a very consistent picture in terms of where we are. It doesn't show us what's here, and the core, the root, the root of the problem. And I think some of the schools have done a really nice job in saying, you know, here's how we've gone in, and we've, you know, mitigated, you know, we've changed some things in terms of how we're teaching. I love the teacher, I apologize, I forgot her name, from, I think, the Atkinson School, fourth grade, who said, you know, "I go back and I hit on what's happening, or what happened in the third grade phonics, and then I, you know, I spend some time on that, so I have the foundation, I'm sure it's there, before I hit the fourth grade work." I love to hear that, I love to see that, but then we just, you know, that's where we are. And then we passed a budget, or I should say, three out of five of us passed a budget that included, you know, COVID recovery services, which is just basically a blank check that's here, and there isn't enough data or information here that's presented on what does it take for us to bring these kids back up and address the gaps that are here? And so this is very concerning, so I hope that we can have an elementary presentation in the future.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt.
This was incomplete, very incomplete.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. Ms. Meble?
No comments, thank you.
I just have one thing to share with the community. The North Andover CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, has their next meeting on Monday, the 8th, at 7:00 PM. It's online, and I believe they have a website that's connected to the North Andover Public Schools website, am I correct about that, Ms. McCruzy?
Yeah, and a Facebook page.
And a Facebook page. So those aren't, who aren't on Facebook can check the website, and those who are on Facebook can check there. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Ms. Lynch, and our roll call vote, Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Teresi?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Meble?
Yes.
And the pair votes yes. It is 9:28 on the 4th of March, 2021, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.